And I gave it time.
Well.
Bye. It was good to see you guys.
Thank you for driving down.
Yeah, it was nice. It was a nice little trip.
Yeah, we'll see you in two weeks.
I thought I'd flirted an email. Sorry if you missed.
Nope, nope, it's on a...
Hey, Dwayne might want to catch you for something.
Did you have a campaign ticket or something?
Two, or, um, Volkers.
Yeah.
Want the number three?
Yeah.
I had you down already. We were.
What's your cell phone number?
Seven one two.
Oh crap, hold on.
Hi Scott.
Seven one two.
If she is with her language again.
Seven two zero.
I tried to get Ken to take me.
Nine zero seven three?
Good job by Scott.
And I said crap.
Maybe same.
I'll just tell him to text you. Did you get ahold of Earl or something?
Sounds like that.
Jared was supposed to get ahold of us.
He'll want seventy-two.
Uh, we don't have seventy-two. That one I do know for sure.
He might have got that one somewhere.
Yeah, because we went through what the guys are wearing now and looking at all the numbers.
Yeah, and I know for sure we didn't have seventy-two.
Yeah. Bill was seventy-two. I don't know. What did I say? Fifty-two?
We found him.
I don't remember. See that we didn't have.
DJ wants his for sure. I gave Crowder here now. I'll text you if he wants.
Guys, and then they can get rid of them all and then there's.
We'll see where I go. Because I know there's something.
Oh Chad?
Hi.
You have a Boy Scout here?
They're there, great.
Is that a Boy Scout here too?
Yeah.
No, this is yours.
Thanks Scott. Have a great time.
Do you want to share that thing with your staff?
I just sent it to you. No, that was kidding. I figured that I'm not.
Awful George. Did you get the invite to?
Don't want to want it there.
There's something. Is somebody request for?
I think I turned it in. He's like, what are you gonna do? I graduated.
We need to make sure somebody is there.
Okay.
To accept it because they give the big check for everything they've done in the year.
And we got some coming?
Well, I'm sure we've got something coming. Um, Chrissy?
Doctor Boss?
Did you get the invite from the gaming for their annual?
Tony, what you been here tonight?
Will you make sure he's got it?
I think he's not. I think he got a copy of it.
Yeah. Well, you took a better man. Somebody can redo it.
I had it ready.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm studying the public hearing tonight. Oh, okay. You and I game.
Now you start trying to do. What did Chrissy see it do?
That probably better not open the street department's thing.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's just making money for blocking them.
Yeah, it's very nice.
No, I thought they made a lot. They made too much money.
We did. Hi. It's you sneaking. Are you still Brett DeShaw Fern or?
No. Nope, she's graduated.
Hello, it's three.
That clock is very forgiving.
So is that? Oh, that's about the same.
I got three and still that's four, that's four.
You have cellular so it's fifty-six, so.
Yeah.
My caller said like fifty-nine.
You know, it's not five fifty-nine because Matt's not here yet.
Right, that's true. Hi. How are you? Don't you look spiffy? Look cold.
I'm actually warm.
I was gonna say that would be.
Hotter than the days of hell on earth.
We don't have yet, sure.
No.
I'm gonna go there and find out.
Now it's five fifty-nine.
Oh man.
Five fifty-seven.
You're early. Go back out.
Your train.
I got a check today for twenty-six cents.
For how much?
Twenty-six cents.
Twenty-six. Why?
I can't remember. I cast it because I know how bad it is on bank reconciliations when people don't cash their little checks.
I got a nine cent check once in my life. It was a stock disbursement for nine cents.
That stock did awesome.
It did. I never got one ever again and the money's gone, so.
So I guess that nine cents was a pretty big deal.
Thank you, no.
We've all seen it. You're the only one.
Chad, you look over that revised plat. When you do one that's like this big? Well, if you got a bigger screen computer, it's bigger. If you have any questions.
It's on your phone, Chad.
I'd love to see a bigger illusion nugget, I guess. Don't have one up here, do you?
No. Not yet. We'll get one. That's. Within the next week or so.
I was trying to do sync for that, man. Couldn't make cats or tails on most of it.
It was somewhere in Iowa.
I don't know where it was at, but it was supposed to know I couldn't.
Here's the guts of it. That'll be what the plat shows. And the emergency entrance. Now, it's gonna be right now here.
Just one?
Just one. It's always required by fire. State regulations.
It's two, one, anyone out?
It's a two-way street.
Okay, two ways in and two ways out.
The one way out is from up above on the writers' road. That main entrance is on the north side.
Okay.
So that one on Butterfield Rancher was just the emergency in and out, so that's where we got to.
It's not an actual road.
What is writers' road?
Uh, it's one up to Deutsches, to the, uh, Dr. Powersports. So between Rancher and, uh, Twent. That's the right. We've got six o'clock. We'll call the meeting order and hold you to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call.
Wyatt?
Here.
Stabell?
Here.
Bunz?
Present.
Reister?
Here.
Ingle? Here.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, consent agenda, anything to remove before we have a motion on that? Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, sacked it.
Uh, any discussion?
Is this, I'm having a hard time pulling my notes up. Is this where on the, um, the monthly payment ledger we break something off?
Right, so just the over two thousands.
Yep, so I noticed there were two water payments to our, um, in the, not, not in this part, but in the.
In the actual ledger?
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, what was that about?
Oh, is it, because the one has cleared and I can't figure out why it's still there. Um, the...
The only reason I ask, we've had a few other times where something's been proven past.
And then.
And then it shows up again. And I just wonder what the accounting.
Make sure there's only one payment.
The accounting purpose of that is and.
Double check. I don't know why that is showing up.
That should have asked you.
It shouldn't be that much, so, I don't know.
So do we want to approve it with that much or?
Uh, prove it's subject to, uh, city clerk validating the correct amount.
Okay.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, members, welcome. Welcome to the Boy Scouts. They're going through their, uh, observation of government in action.
Citizenship in the community.
Aha.
This is one of the requirements, so these three young boys are learning a little bit about citizenship right here in the town of Hudson.
There's a test at the end for Boy Scouts.
And he delivers it. Pay attention. Uh, welcome everybody else to, uh, commendations. Uh, first of all, congratulate the, uh, Hudson girls for winning state cross-country.
First time ever.
Yeah. Got to congratulate the boys for winning their semifinal game in football. And the final game is Thursday, one thirty-six kickoff, Doctor Boss. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And there's a pep rally like at nine forty-five a.m., so everybody should line up on South Hudson Road to say hi on the way through.
I didn't know that, but okay.
School is dismissing early that day?
We start calling it snow days or something for this one? What's going on? That'll count as a full game, won't it?
I think it will.
Yeah, it will. That's awesome. Uh, community reports, we don't have any citizens' requests, oral presentations. We didn't have any requests, did we Chrissy?
No.
Uh, public hearing. I'll open the public hearing regarding an ordinance amending city code, uh, Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-two, water rates. Section ninety-two dash zero-two rate for service. Uh, any written comments?
No.
Uh, any oral comments? We'll close the public hearing. Uh, second public hearing regarding ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-nine sewer rate charges, section ninety-nine. Point zero-one sewer service charges required. Uh, any written?
No.
Any oral comments?
Nope.
Close the public hearing. Uh, general government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Uh, item A, discussion action to approve the first reading, uh, ordinance seven eight five and ordinance amending the city, uh, Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-two, water rates, section ninety-two point zero-two rates for service. And this is the annual, um, motion to the ordinance that we passed, um, which is increasing this year, the base rate is six percent and the rest of the volume rates is ten percent. The rate that's coming from Waterloo is increasing ten percent, so that gives us a little bit of break on the lower volume users, uh, primarily elderly, uh, as well as single households, and then we pass on the same ten percent. Do you have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Ingle?
Aye.
Five zero. Item B, discussion action to approve the first reading, ordinance seven eight six. An ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-nine, water sewer charges, section ninety-nine point zero-one sewer service charges required. Uh, and again, we pretty much parallel this in with the same changes of water as far as timing. Uh, base rate's going up five percent as opposed to waters at six, but the rest of the volume rate's going up ten percent. Uh, it's pretty much to, uh, match our increasing cost as well as continue to build up reserves that we need to have for, uh, repairs in the future, potential sewer plant changes. Do you have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Ingle?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Five zero. Item C, discussion action to approve resolution two three one six, a resolution for approval to offer position of volunteer fire position to Todd Miller, correct?
Yes.
Anything you want to say, Chad, on behalf of your candidate?
Todd comes to us. He's been on a different fire department already. He's got a lot of training already, so he's got a big start on it.
How many openings will this leave you with on your normal?
I'll have to look, but it's probably five or six. I have about thirty-four, thirty-five right now. A little cap before, so.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Discussion. Thanks for helping out. Uh, roll call.
Ingle?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Welcome. You're now official.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang out if you really want.
See ya.
Uh, item D, discussion action to approve resolution two three one seven, a resolution to appoint a selection committee, and what this is, is to a committee to effectively handle the selection of an engineering firm for the, um, Butterfield, uh, road, which would be from south of highway twenty down to three hundred feet south of Rancher. So this is just the group that'll handle the selection of the engineers. Uh, it's Chrissy, myself, Bob, Scott, and Gail, if I'm right.
This will.
And it's Jeff Bales from Harvard.
And Jeff Bales from Harvard.
And this will ultimately come back to council for approval after that selection.
This is simply the engineering selection at this point.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
My only question, and this is in a slate against Chrissy, is, is there anything about a clerk holding a voting position that we need to be aware of?
Uh, no, because this is just a selection of an engineering firm, and it'll still, a recommendation will still go to the council to approve the engineering firm, and then she won't be voted. This is simply to come up with. Who do we want to offer to the council for selection?
Okay.
Yeah, she doesn't have, she doesn't have financial interest in that appointment, so it wouldn't be a conflict.
Okay.
Do you see what I mean?
Yep.
She doesn't, she doesn't get paid out of that fund or anything of that nature, so I don't, I don't see a conflict there.
That's great. Roll call.
Ingle?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Item E, discussion action to approve resolution two three one eight, a resolution of the city council of the city, of the city council of the city of Hudson approving the submittal of a grant seeking funds for a splash pad, and this is Kate's request. I presume, Kate, what we'd need to have is just a statement, effectively a statement from the city that we are in favor of moving forward with the splash pad.
Correct.
Obviously, we've talked to splash pad, but that'll all be dependent upon pricing and funds either from budgets or grants or anything else, so this is kind of a ability to turn you loose.
Right, to show support, that the city is supporting the request to actually go after these grants, so that it's not something that comes back and they say, well, we were gonna give you the money, but your city doesn't want it, basically. So this is just to kind of show support behind that, and then I would have, or whoever would be submitting the grant would have the approval to go forward with those grants if we get that paid for. And it would still have to come back, obviously, for approval if there's any funds spent and we weren't gonna do anything.
I was gonna say, is there, I mean, I'm for a splash pad, I think, but is there any way that if this broke down after this vote, that would somehow?
We're not in any contracts with anybody to do anything. This is just saying, yep, we know that you're gonna go try to get grants for this and we're behind you for doing that.
Cool.
So.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Ingle?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
I'm in Epstein.
Good. Uh, Stabell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Uh, so is that a four zero or a four one?
Four zero.
Are you selling the splash, splash pad?
Am I selling it?
With the abstention.
Because I'm the one going after the grants and I'm the one.
She's the one that has this.
Okay.
That too.
Uh, item F, I think, uh, discussion action to approve resolution two three one nine, a resolution of the city council, the city of Hudson, to approve the submittal of a grant seeking funds for streetscape updates, and this is the banners, correct, Kate?
This is, so let me give a little bit of background on this, first of all. Um, we had discussed between, uh, it was actually the mayor's task force for economic development that we talked about this, the Chamber of Commerce, and then the Lions Club all has funds that they have agreed to. The Lions Club had funds set aside to replace and update the banners that go on the street poles along the main, through our main drag through town. Um, and I was kind of spearheading a project to try to get some of that done, collaborating between the Chamber, the Lions, and the city as well. Um, and in my last gaming association meeting that I'm a board member of, we talked about one of the things that that board would like to focus on would be streetscape improvement projects. What they do is they match funds, so they give fifty percent grants. So my thought here is, let's take that six thousand dollars we were gonna put towards these banners and leverage that and try to apply for some grants to go with that, so maybe we could get bike racks and some benches and just some planners possibly, or some different ideas to update our downtown while we're doing that, so if we can get twelve thousand dollars worth of work done for the same six thousand, we're gonna do just the banners for it. That would be the motivation behind this.
You're so brilliant.
I try. And again, this is just, the gaming board likes to see, I know that's why I'm asking for both of these, the gaming board especially likes to see that yes, the city is behind this grant request, that yep, we're in favor of doing this project as well, so that's why I'm just asking for, because then I can put in the grant application the city has made a resolution to pursue this with us, or to, you know, with their backing on this.
Motion approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I'm, again, not against it, I'm just, I want, is, is there a reason this rises to the top versus any other project?
No.
Streetscapes?
No, it's just, again, we're gonna go in the order of most importance if we're applying for grants, but there's different grants out there that you can apply for different things. This one just came to mind because we were working on these banners and that sentence was said in that meeting.
We have the fifty percent math.
We already have it, so let's apply to, to try to follow it with.
Great. Uh, roll call.
Ingle?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Epstein, please.
Reister?
Aye.
And you're staying for same reasons?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Four zero. Uh, item G, uh, discussion action to approve resolution two three two zero, resolution setting a public hearing to amend section seventy-five dot zero five, the city of Hudson Code of ordinances. What this is, is for setting a public hearing for November twenty-seventh to consider a change to the ordinance to allow ATVs to be used specifically for snow plowing.
This was.
Not for any other use.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion?
This was, we typically have done this in previous years just for the winter time, so that if somebody has a plow on the front of a four-wheeler, they can use that for snow plowing, but can't, it's not legal to drive on the streets as a normal recreational vehicle.
And if I remember right, the history in this one was we had that as an ordinance allowing it, but when we did the recodification to update everything, it wiped out that ordinance that we had in play from previous years. So this is essentially reestablishing it.
So it's illegal to use an ATV on city streets?
As a recreational. Except if you're going, there's, there are exceptions. If you're a farming business going on a direct route to purchase, that, like the go up to get gas, you can go directly there and directly back. Um, and this would allow somebody that is using it for the purpose of plowing snow on their property to do the same thing, basically.
If your question's whether you can run an ATV up from Butterfield down into.
That was my question.
The question is no.
Unless you're a farmer such as Dwayne is running on his ground, so. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell? Ingle?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Uh, item H, discussion action to approve resolution two three two one, a resolution to set a public hearing to approve the request of Aqua Development Group Inc. for approval of the amended preliminary plat for Turin help sedition, and again, this is setting a public hearing for the twenty-seventh to review the request from Aqua Development to change the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second?
Whatever.
Somebody has to know.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Stabell?
Aye.
Ingle?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz? Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Five zero. Uh, item I, discussion action to approve resolution two three two two, a resolution setting date for public hearing and designation of the twenty seventeen Hudson Housing Urban Renewal Area and Urban Renewal Plan and Project, and again, this is for eleven twenty-seven. And this is for resetting, um, the twenty seventeen urban renewal as it affects the northern tier, which would be matched up to the revised preliminary plat for any changes that would be coming through if that is approved on the twenty-seventh. So it's getting all of these dominoes all matched up.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Second, sorry. Uh, Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Ingle?
Aye.
Five zero. Item J, discussion action to approve resolution two three two three, resolution deleting property from the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area. Uh, and this is a red, solution to take, uh, immediate impact, which is deleting that prior area, so it's vacated and be ready for the twenty-seventh.
So this is just the top two that we didn't do at the last meeting, correct?
I think.
No, we did them. We're just starting over. Um, to back up, the public hearing for the urban renewal area is going to be in December.
Okay, because we're gonna wait until after the twenty-seventh actions to make sure we have that all locked in.
So it would be December?
December eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
We're just doing. Oh, we only do one meeting in December?
Yeah, that'll be later. We'll make that decision for sure. It would be the first meeting in December, whatever that date is.
Eighteenth.
So if we already deleted on this, on this deal we're doing right now, if we already deleted the property, didn't we do this last time? So why do we have to do it again?
Because we.
Because did we fill it back in with something else?
No, because we, um, bonding attorney, um, advised us to start over, um, because the plat is being amended.
Got it.
And we have to put a legal description in, so the legal description is changed.
So we're officially, officially deleting it from this one?
Yeah.
As long as we do it twice and not.
It wasn't filed, apparently.
Not zero, let's do it twice.
Yeah, nothing was filed, so.
Okay.
And just getting back to the December eighteenth meeting, we approved that in the consent agenda that we're just doing the one in December.
Yeah. I missed it.
Yes, okay.
So moved.
So moved, okay.
I moved that one if anybody wants to.
Further discussion? On the deletion. Roll call.
Ingle?
Aye.
Stabell?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Bunz? Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna run item K. This is another deletion.
This is the third read.
Well, here, discussion action to waive the first and second readings of ordinance seven eighty-nine, an ordinance deleting property from the tax increment financing district for the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area pursuant to four oh three one nine. This prior was the urban renewal area. This is deletion of the property from the TIF district, again, to get it opened up. And what we're requesting here is a motion to waive the first and second, so that we can get to the third and get it moved to law again because of the changing legal descriptions.
Because then eventually we'll read the part also.
Yes.
That's what'll take place on the.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I typically don't like waiving, but can someone make his case to me for why I should in this case?
Yeah, because what, in order to be able to get the reestablished TIF district after we go through whatever decision we make on the twenty-seventh, then this is to just get it done in advance, so we'd be going first and second. And then immediately through the third, to change, to have that ordinance deleting it. Effectively, we have a district up there that.
Won't exist.
Won't exist. By this action. Right now it exists. We know that we have got to get it changed, so that we can implement whatever we come out of on the twenty-seventh. So that would be the, the primary reason for waiving the first and second is rather than have it go through multiple.
Well, and our bonding attorney is, that's how he wrote the ordinance, waiving the first and second.
Got it. Uh, further discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Ingle?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Stabell? Wyatt?